...of coming through budget calendar.
Can we get the amendment right now?
Sir.
We would like to make an amendment that the first budget session with the administration and board is on November third at four thirty instead of November second.
November sixth.
So we'll just do it prior to the board meeting. Let's see, we'll have the very first one.
Yeah, on the third. That's fine, you'll just send it to me when I'm ready. If I get it on my phone, I'm doing a calendar, I'm not gonna be very fun to have. Be in a meeting, but, yes. Does there any problems with making that change? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve both twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget calendar.
With the amendment?
With the amendment.
One second.
Thank you. Any discussion? You gotta pre-discuss that one. You good?
We're good.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, next. Approve a proposed district nurse nomination. Need a motion?
I make a motion to approve the proposed district nurse nomination.
Second has motion.
Second by Scott. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye abstain. Four in favor, one abstention. Thank you. Uh, look for motion to approve the S C E S point six music teacher nomination.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed S C E S point six music teacher nomination.
A second?
Quick second. Ed, uh, any discussion? Need every music. The elementary school, all in favor of approving the music teacher position as noted, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, need a motion to approve the three community school A B C members.
I make a motion to approve the, uh, three A B C community members.
One second.
Any discussion?
I would just say that, you know, I really encourage them, you know, if we've got a couple of new folks stepping forward, that's gonna be great to get some, um, new perspectives, some fresh feedback and input, and, uh, really looking forward to that process. So, thank you for volunteering.
I'm gonna talk a quick update because it's related, I was saving it. Um, thank you very much for the community members that volunteer for the A B C. I also wanted to thank Josh Chow, who's in attendance, Donna, the town manager, Russ, Donna, Josh and I got together. Super helpful, informative meeting, talking about what's coming from both sides or perspective. I'm excited by what this school can learn over time, follow some of the things that are so successful through town, didn't see funds and other planning. So, yeah, our first informal meeting was, um, really helpful, um, and, uh, it was, it was great. So, uh, we have a couple more on the docket, so, uh, thank you Josh and by extension Donna.
Josh, can we, um, let folks know who the three members are?
Uh, yeah, we missed the obvious, we're the thank you, sorry. You wanna do it?
Laura P. House is heard, uh, Jennifer Rhea, and Wendy Tannen.
Thank you, we missed that. Thank you to the three. Um, I think we did, all in favor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Trying to get through one meeting without missing that. Uh, look for motion to approve the S M H S extracurricular stipend positions.
Make a motion to approve the proposed S M H S extracurricular stipend position. Well, second?
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question on that. Uh, Russ, so the ones that are blank, um, you know, fall, stage play advisor, spring advisor, are, are we just, we don't have folks to fill that, or?
We don't have folks yet to fill that.
Okay, so we, we're currently back.
So what we did this time is we just pulled the list and put the names next to the, uh, list, so those positions are open and we'll get filled and we'll bring them to you if they get filled.
Okay. So are any of them, should any of them be advertised on like the, um, the website?
We certainly can do that.
You know, I'm just thinking, I used to do the mountain bike club, and, um, unfortunately, just don't have much time to do it anymore, but it, it, it was pretty successful when we did it, and maybe somebody in the, you know, town would love to take the kids out.
We certainly could do that around Austin.
Okay.
Did you have something else here?
Yeah, just some, sometimes it's also led by even Chris Love. Yeah, so we have had years where we, uh, we've been fighting that in the, in the demo, we had somebody one year, but for whatever reason, it gives it not that good, right, so, um, and so, some of it is dependent on that.
So, do you do, you know, you do some surveys, or?
Correct, sometimes we'll have sign-ups, so sometimes we'll, sometime before, now sometime before we s- if we have a, if we have that kid and we know he's going to run, we'll definitely get it filled. Some years it's up and down, and so some years what we'll do, for instance, before we hire somebody for it and have nobody sign up for it, we might do a sign-up for it and gauge interest and then go over there.
Okay.
And we do that, and we do that with some sports as well, like, for some years we just don't know, you know, some years we'll know we'll have those who take the varsity and we'll make sure we get all those coaches hired, and some years it will be like, well, we, we might only have two, and we'll see what the numbers are before we go off and hire that person.
Thank you. Yeah, for those who, uh, haven't looked at the list, wanna see the notes, it's a pretty amazing list of all the different things. Robotics, um, B-Club, which is also a major source of, um, money for college, for graduates, for fall play, voice coach, it is fascinating. Um, pretty amazing, so it's great that the students have some of those resources and all those folks stepping up beyond their core jobs. Any other, you wanna comment, anything? You good? All right, all, all in favor of approving the proposed extracurricular stipends positions as noted, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you. We're getting there. Um, I folded into town school collaboration into the A B C because it's highly relevant, it was already, there was one meeting, it was already, it was really helpful. Any questions about that from the board? Any comments, Russ?
Yeah, we had, uh, so we wanted to put under that as well, so.
Yeah.
So the, the two pieces, um, so we heard folks mention that it would be great to see the town and school do some collaboration and, and work together. Uh, I think folks miss that there are lots of those opportunities and we take advantage of those opportunities. Um, Mindy is here from the Abbott Library, and I know that her explain, but she actually wrote a grant, uh, to the Hampshire Library Subcommittee, um, that is going to actually help us save a little bit of money, condense our catalogs, and be a better resource plus for our kids here at school, uh, and the community, so Mindy, if you wanna talk about it, please.
Hi there, um, Mindy Abbott, I'm the director of the Abbott Library. Uh, so I know that this board, um, the administration is familiar with S R funds. Um, on the municipal side of things, excuse me, uh, on the municipal side of things, there was about two hundred million dollars given to the Institute for Museum and Library Studies. Um, and that came directly from the ARPA, um, the ARPA Act. So, what I M L S did was they then, using a formula, pushed out funds to all fifty state libraries. Um, our library here, our state library here in New Hampshire, then made two rounds of sub grants available to public libraries in New Hampshire. Uh, the first round was a formulaic amount, were given based on your population and some other demographic information. This is how much your library can qualify for, and so you applied for that first round of sub grants and you received those funds. We use those funds to offset our additional cleaning needs at the library. Um, there's currently a second round of sub grants that's open right now, it is a competitive round of grants, and one, the biggest charge that they put before public libraries who are interested applying for the second round of grants was that they wanted to think, see projects that had a lasting impact on the community and provided some sort of strategic solution that would be a, give a long-term solution to the community at large. Um, so, we, I decided that it would be a great idea to build upon, um, what I think is already a very successful and collaborative relationship between the library and the school district, which makes sense, we're both in the business of, of education in one way or another. Um, so, what I proposed was to create a shared catalog between the three libraries in Sonoma Bay, the elementary, uh, school library, the middle high school library, and the Abbott Library. Really what it's about is a couple things, it's going to make visible to all of our library patrons and all of the school district students the variety of resources that are available, it's gonna make it a little more easily discoverable, and hopefully, we're going to be able to not only share that catalog, but share our resources by, um, sharing the system. Um, so we will hear about the grant awards very early in December. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Yeah, I think your work requires some.
I'm, I'm really excited about it, I, I think it's going to provide a jumping off point for a lot more collaboration in the future as well, so, everybody, fingers crossed, and I'll, I'll let you know how it goes.
Good luck, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mindy.
Uh, the Sonoma East of collaboration, uh, Chief Cahill reached out to me, as folks know, uh, the DAB program has been around for a while. Uh, he's been in our fifth grade, he actually has a, an officer that comes up and works in our health classes as well, as well. Um, this year, uh, they have developed the DAB program, and he has got a certified officer in LEADS. I'm sorry, I don't know what the acronym stands for, I'm through his email, uh, L E A D S. Uh, this, uh, he's got some money through the Mercedes Foundation, incorporates cyberbullying and violence, as well as joint alcohol, are you familiar with the name of it?
Yes.
Uh, but he will be, um, implement, helping implement that program in our fifth grade and we get to, to work in our health classes at our fifth grade. So we got just a couple examples of, of that continued collaboration with the town.
You can't find it quickly enough back in the, all right, well, thank you for that, thanks to, again, to Mindy and, and thanks to, to Cahill for that. Um, I think that covers it.
Okay.
Okay. Um, October one, twenty twenty enrollment, so just a reminder for folks that are new to school board meetings, how this works. The, uh, enrollment is a bit of a moving, um, number. Um, beginning of the year, at the last meeting, um, Principal Houston said he picked up three kids that morning. Somebody else said the two moved away, so it's, it goes back and forth. Um, the district uses, um, all districts use a service for projections on enrollment. We use N E S D A C, and it looks at, um, births, real estate, census, all kinds of factors. Um, so, we have this looking back, we have this looking forward, if you wanna take it from here.
Sure, just real quick, a quick, three of the slides. Um, we had this in the end of, the N E S D A C projection at the end of two thousand and nineteen. Uh, this was their projection at that time from nineteen to twenty-nine. And, uh, this is the accuracy of that, that projection of that, so, I guess that's gray, we'll call it that. Um, the second line there, the gray of that, that's our actual enrollment, so you can see, N E S D A C predicted four sixteen, we came at four thirty-two, they did it at four twelve, we came at four thirteen. This year, four oh one, our enrollment's four oh one. So, anyway, this speaks to the accuracy, um, and, and again, if this has been in this ballpark and they're pretty close, our assumption would be, you know, this would follow, so I think when we look at our enrollment, we continue to look at our enrollment, we've heard about it being up and being down. Um, if you really look at our enrollment, you go back to two thousand and twelve, it's fairly consistent in this ballpark, and it may go down to three ninety-eight, and it may go up again to four thirty-two. But our overall enrollment continues to be consistent, I guess is what I'm just trying to portray. And N E S D A C has been a real credible source.
Yeah, those are the facts, you know, some folks in town like to lead with, you know, plummeting enrollment and decreasing enrollment and everything else, but hopefully, projection to the actual, that's almost exactly spot on, um, gives taxpayers and voters confidence that, um, our enrollment is healthy and is exactly where it's predicted to be years ago, so, um, I think that's all we got on that. Do you have anything else?
I also, uh, really encourage you to see a big jump in the pre-K program.
Yep.
That's, that's bogus, though.
Just need a good school to have them in. Thoughts or comments, questions from the board? It's great to see the projection against the actual, there's nothing like that. Um, thank you, Mr. Holden, I already.
So, I'll tell you, all that information's online, so the N E S D A C reports are online, they've been online for a while, and our enrollment obviously is, is continuing for a while.
Yeah. Um, and then when this, when we get rolling with the project site, having that front center would be helpful, especially for new, new voices, new interest. Uh, we pulled the C I P update in, so I think we've covered that fully, moving on to negotiation update.
Just quick, we've got, uh, two meetings, we have some more scheduled, um, we're now really in, in the place of really looking at facts, looking at at different opportunities, having back and forth conversations. Um, well, we continue to have the following law of negotiations in New Hampshire, which is, uh, two seventy-three A, Public Employee Labor Relations Act. Um, I would say two seventy-three A, New Hampshire. The, was a comment I read earlier today that, uh, our teacher's negotiation, our contract isn't a miracle. Again, online, we signed the Hampshire Public Employee Labor Relations, N H P L R V, um, is going. Put collective bargaining agreements, collective bargaining agreements, New Hampshire and Google, it'll spit a holler to you, and you go S through Z, which category comes up. Sure enough, something's right there, you can click on it, you can see that, I believe there's even a way to toggle that, you can go into the past years if you want to compare one, you have to do it. So, that information again is public information, it's online, public New Hampshire websites. And negotiations is going well, we'll continue to update you as we move further down the negotiation line.
Great. Any dad and question or comment? Okay, uh, back to the exciting stuff, I need a motion for the A B P manifest, and it's proper to do a separate one for the payroll manifest. Somebody, I'm not gonna look at Scott, 'cause he usually cleans up on this, so just take it from any of the four of you, does somebody wanna walk us through the manifest motion?
Make a motion to approve the A B P manifest, twenty twenty-two dash zero four, three hundred thirty-five thousand one dollars each cent. Twenty twenty-two dash oh five, two hundred twenty thousand six hundred sixty-nine dollars. Twenty twenty-two dash zero six, four hundred seventy-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars thirteen cents. And twenty twenty-two dash zero seven, two hundred forty-two thousand eighty-eight dollars and three cents. I'll sign on that motion.
All right, any discussion? All in favor of approving the A B P manifest as noted, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, a smaller round too for the payroll manifest.
I make a motion to approve the payroll manifest, twenty twenty-two dash zero four, thirty-seven thousand nine hundred fifty-two dollars and forty-one cents. And twenty twenty-two dash zero five, hundred and eighteen thousand seven hundred nine dollars and eighty-four cents.
Great. Discussion? All in favor, as noted, please say aye. Unanimous, thank you. Um, since we changed the policy on public forum between policies, it's, we could, we have a new policy that says we only have it at the beginning, people came tonight to a meeting, no, expecting two. I personally would like to honor the agenda as written, is that okay with everybody?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, same policy that is on the agenda, which was fifteen minutes set aside, three minutes each, learn from the public. We'd love to hear more voices, if you spoke the first time, you can speak again. Go to the mic, introduce yourself, your address, or your words.
Jan Betancourt Fernwood Point, um, I do have a couple comments on the policy change. Um, I appreciated being, having the two sessions so that we could comment on the agenda at the end, I thought that was, that, because you, you couldn't comment ahead of time. So it was really helpful. I did appreciate Andy's comment about, um, the possibility of addressing some of the comments that were made at the first, at the end of the meeting, I thought that, that was so transparent and, and really responsive to, uh, the public's questions. Uh, I still find it very difficult to get answers to questions. Um, you can email, but you don't get responses in, in an email, and it's hard to dial up. Um, I, I appreciate so much the one-on-one conversations that I have had, it's been really helpful for, for me. Um, the, the idea of the policy is, is unique to, to any school district. Uh, it is not a law, you can decide just exactly what you want, if you want to respond to communities' questions. Um, I, Eddie, um, I'm not sure how we are going to get our questions answered, um, if you don't have that second, uh, second opportunity. Um, and the, the one comment I'd like to make is, um, there is also the opportunity for any member of the board to say point of, or, or even, uh, a community member to say point of order and ask the board to provide an extension. So, let's say any of you, the school board members, to say there's somebody in the public that's making a comment and they, and they run out of their three minutes, um, you have an opportunity to allow them, uh, to do that, and, and the public can do that as well. So I think there's already a mechanism to do that, instead of establishing a certain time. I don't think historically we have had that big a problem, I mean, I've been to, for twelve years, I've been attending school board meetings, and very, very seldom is there, uh, an overabundance of people who wanna talk. I, I also wanna comment on the, uh, extension on the agenda, that you added the, the, the policies onto the agenda online, and I appreciate that. But I hope in the future that you will put more of what's on this, your packet, the school board packet, on the agenda as well. We, we have access to the policies, uh, online, but it would be, uh, helpful to have any of that information. Again, I appreciate all that transparency, and the volume was much better tonight, thank you.
Thank you for being here and speaking.
John Augustine Stagecoach wrote, "So neither in the E E I presentation or in the comments from the board was there any mention of how you're gonna address the second means of egress for the current elementary school." So that was brought up two years ago, when it was a one-campus proposal, as being a critical safety issue. I haven't heard anything about it since that two years ago bond vote, so hopefully in the future, we will hear how that second means of egress would be addressed with your upcoming bond vote proposal separately. So, we just had a quick presentation on the enrollment. My understanding from reading the chart was, it was four hundred and thirty-two students total in the district, two school years ago, four hundred and fifteen students last year, and four hundred and one students this year, so if I read that incorrectly, please correct me. But that's a steady decline, four thirty-two to four oh one, over the course of two years. It was emphasized that the projections are that the budget, that the enrollment's gonna stay flat. But then why doesn't the budget stay pretty flat? Like, over the course of the last ten years, the enrollment has declined, I'll say approximately twenty-five percent, five hundred plus students now to four hundred. But the budget's almost double, so, people are just confused, if the enrollment's going down, why is the budget at least staying constant instead of going up, up, up? And then third point, uh, someone mentioned earlier in the meeting that the people, some people are saying, wait, 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 to do anything with the elementary school. I don't think people are saying wait, they're saying, get one campus, bring everybody into one building, given the number of students that are involved, and that way you can streamline some of the operating costs and some of the administrative overhead. So, I, I would just ask, you know, be careful when you say people are saying wait, 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 I don't think they're saying, they're saying, go to one campus, do it in a fiscally, fiscally responsible manner, and don't ask the taxpayers to pay for a hundred percent of it. You could make cuts in the operating budget, you could work with the town to make cuts in their operating budget, that would offset the cost of a bond. And still, year after year, we hear nothing about fundraising. Several board members invited and thanked the young parents for coming to the meetings, but you refuse to ask anyone to do any fundraising. And I, I don't understand that, so please, between now and March, think about what could be done to meet the taxpayers at least part way, either through some budget cuts in the operating budget, or by doing some fundraising. Because I think if you would give some indication that it's not gonna be a hundred percent on the back of the taxpayers, you would have much greater chance for success.
I was about to go through you, Tom. Thank you for being here and speaking.
Josh Chow, Westport Road, um, and sort of on the select board side of things. Um, and in case anybody hasn't heard, school board members, whatever, we have selected a new town manager, uh, her name is Shannon Martinez. We're going through the locality paperwork, background stuff, you know, the non-fun side of it now. Um, but assuming there's no issues with that, she'll be starting October fourteenth as assistant town manager. Um, she's very energetic, anybody who's met her has known she's full of questions and ideas. So I think, um, with the board, with, with Russ, we're certainly interested to see how things proceed, but it's, it's gonna be interesting having a, another, uh, another fresh face in the room, and we're, we're excited about it, and hopefully everybody else is, um, as well. So just wanted to kind of throw it out there that, um, if anybody didn't know, Donna's retiring, November fifth is her last day. Um, and then Shannon will be taking over as full-time manager then, so, we're excited, I think everybody who was on it is, is excited, and, uh, we're looking forward to continuing working with the school and seeing what we can do with some, some new ideas and, and fresh advisors and stuff.
Thanks, thanks for sharing that, and being here. Uh, it's great to have the relationship from before that we do with you and Donna, and it'd be great to meet, um, energetic Shannon and hear her questions and start working with both of you on that, so, thanks for that. Please?
Chris Whitehouse, I live on Wyndham Road. Um, you know, last year, according to minutes of October, you had four hundred and one kids enrolled in the school system. According to that, you had four hundred and one, so you didn't actually pick up or lose anybody, but, uh, I don't really understand how you guys get those numbers, regardless. Uh, Town Sonoma's grown about five percent since the last census, but our enrollment has declined probably about fifteen in that timeframe. It's, uh, down about, John Alex Johnson, about twenty-five percent in the last fifteen years or so, continues to decline. I don't think, uh, getting rid of K through twelve is a good idea here, I do believe you need to save it. But I do believe that John is right, and a lot of people agree, one campus and being able to, uh, streamline some positions, perhaps, uh, get rid of some redundant positions, could take that money and put it towards a bond to pay for a good lion's share of that new school. I think fifty-two thousand square feet was a bit ridiculous, uh, but, you know, thirty-five, forty thousand probably wouldn't be that bad. I will tell you, I'm in contractor sales, and I know any contractor who understands this, as you mentioned, some of the things that are going up. Uh, my company had five percent price increase this year, and we're projected to have a ten percent one next year. My competitors have already had about ten, eleven percent this year, and they're projecting another five, ten percent next year. So, I think, uh, trying to build anything next year would be crazy, I understand you guys wanna move forward with this, and I understand, I get it. But I think, uh, without any funding, potential fund, from the state or anybody else, and increases in cost, to, to put that bond forward would be just, just seem like it'd be a redundant thing to do. I do believe your best option is to put forth a bond, uh, with, uh, actual things in place that you said that you would cut based upon redundancy of having, or the, the joining two campuses together, would possibly get you some, uh, some movement in the right direction. And I'll, and I'll end it with this, there's people who show up in March who vote yes no matter what, there's people who show up in March and vote no no matter what. There's a lot of people who vote yes and no, and it's the people who vote yes and no that you kinda need to compromise with. Twenty-five years in sales and tailor the way to be successful, in sales is to compromise. And the way to be suc- successful in life is to compromise, whether it be your spouse, or a friend, your boss, or whatever. You have to compromise, you have to meet halfway, and I don't think that, the reason why these bonds keep failing is I don't think you're doing that. And, and it's no offense to you, but I think there's, there's some leeway there, that you gotta, you gotta kind of meet us halfway in the middle, and I think you probably get what you want. Thank you.
Thank you for being here and sharing your opinion.
I'm Samantha Bailey Haney, I live in Lower Main Street, and, um, I'm speaking out as a parent and an early childhood educator. I've run a local preschool and summer camp for ten years, and I think it's important that I speak out. Um, I agree with a lot of the things that Laura had said in regards to the decision on masking. I agree with a lot of the things that Laura had said in regards to the decision on masking. And I think it's important that we don't just have a knee-jerk reaction to the act, what's happened in the last twenty-four hours. I think that numbers get inflated and there's a lot of fear factors. And I, I think it's important to remember that we're, we're moving towards wanting to have zero tolerance, zero risk, zero symptoms, zero cases. And that's just not the reality of childhood needs to take risks. You can, you can put kids into bubbles, you can completely isolate them, but that's not what is developmentally appropriate and that's what's not going to work in the long term. We don't know what's going to happen in the long term, but this is a scary thing. And I feel very strongly about it because everyone's saying, well, we're just having these extra cases and so we're just going to put these mask mandates in place for the next fourteen days. But two years ago, I was told that we were going to do things for two weeks so we could flatten the curve and look where we are now. So I really want people to take it seriously and not have knee-jerk reactions and to realize that there are going to be risks and I don't want to take unnecessary risks. But the reality of COVID being a danger to our children is almost a statistical zero and it's important to follow the real numbers. I, I, I just, I feel like this might not seem like a big issue, but it really is. By choosing to implement controlling policies, it's a very polarizing issue. If this continues, there is going to be significant declining enrollment as families will make, make the choices that they need to make for their own families. And they will seek out alternative education. This will devastate the future of our close-knit, school-focused community. And so it's important that we are taking it very seriously.
Thank you for being here and sharing your opinion.
Still, Michael Haxton from Fernwood Point. Couple of things I want to say. I started this two and a half years ago, Jesse, when you asked if I would be on a committee to try and see how we can save Sonomae, make it a K through twelve without having to have grades nine through twelve be shipped out. I spent a lot of time and effort into that plan and I'm disappointed with some of the information we've given to you people to investigate that passed out. You didn't want to look at it. So I'm just going to just say this, as the chairman, I asked for us for a square foot for nine through twelve, because you guys are always looking at building an elementary school. And we were told twenty-one thousand square feet based on the Department of Education. We put a proposal for our twenty-four thousand square foot building. It was coming in anywhere between two and four million dollars less than what the proposal was for the renovation project. Two years ago, you wanted to put a fifty-two thousand square foot elementary school up. Today, now you're down to with an addition of forty thousand. So there's a lot of misinformation, mixed messages we're hearing from you. Two years ago, you said, crazy, spend ten point seven million dollars on a renovation project. That's why we want the new school. I supported, I supported for twenty-eight million dollars. Here's the questions that people are asking. Why would you think the citizens would be willing to spend one year later the same amount of money the previous year if it wasn't a smart investment? What are the needs versus the wants of fifty-two thousand square foot elementary school, forty thousand square foot elementary school? In two thousand and nineteen, we were told that the high school heating system here was on its last leg. It was over, overdone, it was going to be two million dollars to rent it here. And, and it was about a three million dollar project to make this K through eight if we had to. So my question to you this is, you know this building's got to be here. Why wouldn't you look to take some of that money and put a new heating system here and everything else? The other thing I keep hearing is this, it's the field, it's the field. What are you going to do, Mike? Your, your addition, where are we putting it? So I really find it troubling that a field is holding up the chance to help these kids out. I told you last year when we put the bond issue up, just like Allentown did, put it in. Do you support this warrant article if we get thirty percent back from the state? You didn't want to do that. You basically said, hey, we have the potential to get three million dollars. I think that was a mistake. I think now with no money coming in from the state and stuff, do what you have to do to kind of keep that school going. But in two years, put a warrant article up for an addition here, one campus, even put money in for a sports field and put it in, if we get this from the state, will you support it? I will get behind you a hundred percent if you guys do that down the road. I've offered to give money on microphones here, I never got taken up. Chris offered to give a thousand dollars, a starting project.
Why don't you, Mike, your time?
My time?
Yeah.
I'll just finish it with this, Jesse, and you'll add this.
So my concern is that the next meeting.
No, Jesse, you don't have to, trust me, just let me finish.
Or have the same.
You won't, Jesse, when you let me finish one minute and you'll be happy and I'll be gone. Because of health reasons, this is my last school board meeting that I am going to be attending. Okay, I wish you nothing but the best of luck. But I feel like it's not in my best interest to keep trying to fight for kids I don't have in the school system. It's up to you, it's up to the taxpayers. Let the chips fall how they fall. But I know I did the best I could to try and get, keep Sonomae K through twelve and what was best for the taxpayers and for the students. And thank you for your time.
All right, I think that concludes a couple of comments. Next meeting, topics, I'm not sure if you already have them, but just think about policy second reading, negotiations update, CIP next steps, ABC progress, and then monthly tasks. Anything else jumping out?
Do you have a student assessment from both schools?
Right. Yep. I'm missing something, but I've got a couple of weeks to gather together. Yeah, I think a fairly, fairly solid agenda, a lot of updates. And I wish the policy subcommittee and the CIP a good month with the work that I had and negotiations. Looking for a motion to adjourn at eight fifty.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight fifty.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you to the public for your interest in Square to Public Schools and Sonomae K twelve.